So, um, six o'clock is our regular meeting, then we have a six thirty budget hearing meeting, and then after that we'll have a annual meeting. So we have three meetings tonight. But the first one we'll get going on is the regular July meeting. So just your first page. Um, I'll adopt the agenda of that first meeting. No changes? Correct? Correct. Okay. How about you guys take a motion to adopt it then? Joel and Lynn Wade, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. No public comments or visitors? Conflict of interest disclosures during this meeting? None, right?
No.
Yep, yep. And then the next thing is the consent agenda for the meeting minutes for the regular meeting on June ninth and the June twenty twenty-five payroll. So take a motion on those? Second? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next we'll discuss the old business, starting with gymnastics co-op. Do you want to lead us on that?
Yep, I certainly can. If you go to pages seven, eight, and nine of your packets. This is the information that I emailed out to you about some other gymnastics co-ops, as well as school co-ops around the state. Uh, in addition to that, I also provided you, we've got a one-page piece of paper that I handed out, that's got our twenty-four, twenty-five financials. Uh, just to give you an idea what it costs with that program. Granted, this year we didn't provide any warm-up, so the only thing out of capital outlay was a mat. Uh, and then this does not include transportation costs or awards. So if I was to give it a number, I would say we'd be around that fifteen, sixteen thousand, uh, for the program. We do not generate a lot in admissions, um, in our biggest, probably our biggest expenses officials throughout the year. With that, I provided you a, a copy of, of a recent, uh, co-op that, uh, Hamlin and Castlewood did. And granted, that's the only thing that those two are co-opted in. Uh, just to give you an idea how they do it, number of schools split the expenses at the end of the year. Some just do a flat amount. Um, it's, it really depends. Uh, I also provided you, uh, basically it was our current agreement that we have for wrestling, which is going to be all of the same information outside of how we want to do the monetary amount with Dewbrook. If we want to do it based on the number of participants, or if we want to do a flat amount per participant, um, that's what we're going to need to, to, uh, do tonight and approve the actual cooperative application.
Are, the, uh, current wrestling agreement isn't?
Yeah.
The one I put in here is the, this was the-
That's the Hamlin, yeah. The one that I emailed you guys was what we have to go through is basically our-
Yeah.
The application, the things that the state asks you to put in there. I'm talking gymnastics. I think we can tackle the wrestling down the road, so.
But this is just example of the wrestling-
Yes.
What they do for wrestling.
Yes.
Hamlin and Castlewood. That's in the packet.
My suggestion, and granted, this is my suggestion, is that we would do a flat amount per participant versus having Ellen split all of this out and, uh, going to all of that work and it'd probably be about a two hundred dollar difference or something like that anyways. So, I guess if I was to put a number on it, I think fifteen hundred dollars per participant would be a, a decent amount. That would offset it.
That's kind of ten percent of the operating cost for gymnastics? If we add in transportation and awards. So our first decision is if we're gonna do the co-op with Dewbrook and Hamlin. Those are the two.
I, I have the cooperative of application for Dewbrook only here. So we're gonna be, we'll be dealing with Dewbrook tonight and what we would want to charge them. Nothing with Hamlin right now. We can talk about that if that's something we want to pursue and talk about next month, we can.
And there's what, three? Three kids?
Two, I thought, I had said.
Two with a possibility of a third?
Yes. Yeah.
We have a lot, six, seven?
Yeah, I would say about that.
Have you had any opposition to it? Anyone reached out to you saying they don't?
No, I haven't, other than what, um, uh, the coach had reached out to the parents and they were either neutral or they were in favor of it. So I haven't had anybody that's...
I think because their numbers are low and they're only bringing a few. I wonder if we could put in like a stipulation of a max number? Like, we, yes, we'll do the co-op, but no more than five or leave it as it is? And see if they gain more?
I don't know if you can limit participants.
I've seen it in other contracts.
Um.
A max number? I, I would, I'm open to whatever. I'm just throwing in an idea, really. Or we say yes? Yeah?
So they're twenty-five, they're twenty-five percent of the kids and they're sixteen thousand. They're just shy of twenty-five percent of the cost of the program, which I mean, what, whichever, I mean, that's, they gain a couple kids at that price, then they'll... Because that's, every, every student that comes in will be fifteen hundred. I mean, and then for however long we go then.
Yep. Yep, that's all, everything, it'd be the exact same as what we're doing with, with wrestling. It's all on them.
And if they make it to state, we don't pay like meals for their kids.
Nope. They would, they would pay for that.
Yeah. We just pay for our kids for meals.
Well, it's good to be on a two-year deal or not?
Two years, fifteen hundred a s- person. We have to agree to it. They also have to agree to it at their school board meeting. So it's not a done deal yet until they accept that, but.
Yep, okay.
And then, uh, we'll need to decide the one, the Hamlin one as well. Um, so the next meeting we'll decide if that's one student.
Before you, before you take a motion here, um, just filling you in, the Hamlin superintendent reached out to me this week too and just said, hey, where are you at with it? Are you talking about it this meeting? I said, I will bring it up again. I said, we're dealing with the Dewbrook one right now. I said, um, he was very upfront and said, hey, we're sending this to S. Line and Hendrix as well, but the parents would like to go to Clear Lake because there's some sort of a connection here with our coach or the program, whatever. So, I said, all right, I will tell the board that. Um, so we can... I mean, it's up to you as a board. I, I would be in favor of adding them as well.
It looks like we just did it all in one chat.
If we're gonna do this.
Because that was only one student, right?
That's one student, potentially two, but he said it didn't sound like that.
I mean, I don't, I, you're gonna add, I don't, why, why do we need to add another school?
It's numbers.
Well, it's one.
To me, why not? Because of the numbers?
Well, because you could potentially, you could get, I mean, you could have, if they add three or four and Dewbrook adds three or four.
Potentially, or we don't have a program because we don't have enough students. But there's all, both alternatives.
We've been able to maintain a program for the last ten years of numbers as well as what we've got right now.
But that's part of limiting it to two years too, is then if we, if it doesn't work, then we reevaluate it in two years.
Right, if we grow our numbers.
So how are you gonna do that? Well, we've got enough kids now. We've got twelve kids out from dual. So now we're gonna go to Hamlin and Dewbrook and say, you're not gonna participate? What does that look like? I mean... No, I think you let Dewbrook in. We've got a good working relationship with Dewbrook. I think it's proven. I just think distance-wise, I think it complicates it several, from several aspects. I don't think it's apples to apples. I mean, we didn't let Camby in.
They want you to be by distance-wise.
Well, Hamlin is a lot further away than Dewbrook.
But it doesn't affect us because they're bringing the kids.
Well, it's, I mean, you cross over how many districts to get there? I mean, they want to open and roll and come in, like we've had students do from Henry and some other districts, that's fine.
Yeah, I get the, uh, when do you draw the line to open and roll in how many schools? Eventually, I mean, we don't want to be at like five schools. For sure that... And that school could push us in that direction at some point, couldn't it? Hamlin? It'd be a while, but I'm just saying, like, there's a risk at some point. Well, I'd say let's, we could do a vote for each. What do you think? Make a decision on each one separately? Dual and then Hamlin? Or we, do we want more discussion before Hamlin? Yeah, that's what I mean. Two, two decisions. Uh, Julie, you'll have to turn your mic on too when you talk. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna say let's vote on the dual, excuse me, Dewbrook. I said it wrong to begin with. The Dewbrook, um, co-op. And I was all in favor. I, I'll just go one at a time? Or say all in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion is to go with, is it, you're asking, oh.
Motion is for Dewbrook.
I'll make the motion.
True, good point.
No one did.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to go with Dewbrook, fifteen hundred, a student renew after two years.
I'll take a second. Now we do a vote? Sorry, thanks. Doesn't happen very often. And then an aye for Dewbrook?
Aye.
So three ayes, one nay. Majority is in. Oh, I need to vote? Okay, then, uh-
Rule call.
I, so Tony's a yes, Wade's a no, Joel's a yes. Leah?
Yes.
Danae, yes. Anything else? On that one?
Nope.
Okay. So we're good on the Dewbrook co-op gymnastics. Now we'll do the Hamlin gymnastics co-op, and I'll need a motion on that.
I want to make a motion to co-op with Hamlin for gymnastics.
You did good. I'll take a second.
Joel?
Okay. All right, so now we will just do a vote. I'm just gonna go down the line.
I thought we voted on that one.
No, that was Dewbrook first.
Just doing the one.
We were doing them separate, so sorry.
Oh, I thought that was, I thought that was, well, whatever. I'll say, I said nay, that's fine. I, I misunderstood.
Oh, sorry.
Well, if you're-
The first one was Dewbrook. We did them separately.
If you want to do a yes on Dewbrook, change your whole.
Yeah, I would vote yes.
So it's all yes.
You'd vote yes for Dewbrook?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, I'm sorry, okay. All right, so now to Hamlin. So we got our motions taken care of, so now we're gonna do votes. And I'm just gonna go down the line. Tony?
Yes.
Wade?
Nay.
Joel?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Danae?
Yes.
I'm assuming that student from Hamlin's coming over here already, right?
No.
For the gymnastics?
No.
You're going to another facility? Oh, used?
At the moment, she's not.
I was wondering if that's the connection.
Right, but majority is a, a, a yes. So four, yes, one no. Are we good on the gymnastics co-op? Are you good to set, work out an agreement on the details?
Yep, I'll take care of it from here on out.
Okay. All right. Good? You guys moving on? The next, we'll move on to the second reading of the handbooks, first being the middle school, high school handbook. Yeah, that's fair. Just any changes since the last reading, I guess, is the only thing we ask. Nothing changed.
Nothing changed.
Did you guys have any questions from the first reading?
I skimmed through them, but I didn't see any red.
Right. Okay, so we'll just vote on that, like that's good to go? All right, I'll take a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Second reading of the elementary handbook. Any changes, Todd?
No changes.
So I'll take a motion on the document. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we will get to go through the financial report, month ending June thirtieth. Scrolling to the page number. Page ten, starting on. Any questions? Anything to note, Ellen, I guess?
Hundred thousand? A hundred thousand?
I moved a hundred thousand dollars over to, um, to service. And then these are sixteen and sixteen for some.
Mm-hmm.
Sixteen, sixteen through nineteen are the actual expenses.
And revenue for the year. Unless there's anything that'll, there might be some little changes, uh, once I like do the annual report, but for the most part, everything should be in here. Um, and we did on every, I mean, we didn't have to do any, um, additions to it because we were within budget.
Yeah.
Short on expenses and long on revenue on every one of my things, wasn't it?
Yep.
Good assessment, thank you.
That was good.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Just a question, um, when you move that hundred thousand, it's got to come out of general fund.
Yep.
That money can't go out of capital outlay. It's got to go to capital outlay, to general fund, and then trace it back.
Yes, and we did not do the one, we did not do a transfer from capital outlay to,
This year.
To general fund. We did not do that. Um, and we were still a two hundred dollar, I mean, two, two hundred thousand dollar, um, in our revenue, so that's gonna go to fund balance.
Okay.
And that's part of the reason why I didn't, because we still have to meet like our cash each year, so it's probably good that we didn't transfer anything from capital.
Yep.
We get our low month in where we wanted our, did we, do you gotta have that low month yet?
Right, yes.
Did happen?
Yes, that did happen. But now we have an additional two hundred thousand dollars in there, so we're gonna have to, next year, really watch. And maybe we transfer some of the wind tower money back to capital or to capital like we can.
So that comes into general fund, right?
It comes into general fund and you can transfer it to capital. But you have to do it in June. It has to be done.
Which is...
Just good timing because you'd know by then.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get to the bills after, but any other? Finance questions? Otherwise, we'll, I'll take a motion.
Go move. Joel?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is we'll look at the bills for June. And that's on page twenty. And just note that the June capital outlay is always this busy. Because we're always buying stuff ahead of time for, right? Yep.
Is that on this? I was seeing all those, um, software, software. That's for the year purchased?
Yes.
There's...
Annual.
Yeah.
Yeah, and plus our debt service, the big payment, the principal payment comes out also.
Yep.
So that was, that's over half of the, well, it's more than half of it.
And the bus?
That's all the bus.
Yeah, the bus is in there too.
Yep.
Because that's coming tomorrow.
Oh, really? Fun. Questions on the bills from you all?
Software is expensive, but textbooks are too, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Even electronic textbooks.
Like I said, a lot of the stuff is, comes in in, I mean, July, because we try to get it ordered like in June, whatever, so it's delivered in July and paid for in July.
Yep.
So is, is, um, the textbook from Savis, is that how you pronounce that? That's our grade school English?
No, that one is our middle school basic social.
Okay. And then our, the grade school English, is that already here or is that on this sheet too or not? Already here.
I don't know, that, that was not on here, no, so we probably haven't been billed for that.
You got textbook on the, you know, textbook learning that says textbooks, or Carnegie Learning Textbooks by Thousand. That's not for textbooks, huh?
For which one, sorry?
Carnegie Learning, Third Line Capital Outlay.
Um, yeah, I think, I'm trying to think of what the Carnegie Learning ones are. Are those, is that middle, something middle school too?
Yeah.
I think. I think it's something middle school also. Yeah, that ninety-five percent isn't on here, because apparently we haven't been billed for it yet, so that'll be one that'll hit next month.
That'll be another thirty thousand?
Probably. Yep.
And the flooring, that was the classroom updates.
Classrooms, yep.
And it looks really good. If you haven't gone to see.
No, I haven't.
It's really nice.
It does look nice. I walked down there one day too to look at it.
Okay?
That's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
Joel, make a motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll move on to approve Brian Tweet for, um, two thousand dollars to pay him for the Perkins Consortium stipend for his work that he does every year to manage that. Did I say that right?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next is the insurance renewal through Marshall McLennan, property, general, professional liability, crime, commercial, auto, and umbrella annexes. And that starts on page twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yes.
Can I ask, how long, are we, is that the only one that does one of these for us? Puts together this? That's where you get our insurance from, the renewing?
We have, and if we want to go out somewhere else, we can. It's kind of, it's late this year because it started on July first, but if we want to-
Go up for it.
Go out to any other companies, I guess we can.
One of the things you brought up in our committee meeting was to have multiple vendors and, you know, make sure we're getting competitive offers.
They, they do go out, if you read, because there's some things in here we need to discuss. I mean, they do go out. They have different vendors that they use, um, for the, for the different insurances on...
Even on this policy, they got two, two possible vendor, or, I don't know how many they got, but they at least got two. One, one is Lloyds, if you take that other, okay, so anyway. But you gotta have, you're gonna have to explain that alternative to me because I didn't get it. I didn't understand.
So, okay. So this is the email that I got. I did not put this email in there, but this is the email that I got. Our property values increased four percent, and that was because of the new addition. So part of that, there's, I mean, because the increase, the- Our property values increased four percent, and that was because of the new addition, so part of that, there's, I mean, cause the increase, the, just the property itself increased quite a bit. Um, and then okay, so property increased, deductible increased from twenty-five hundred to ten thousand. Initially, they came in with fifteen thousand, but they got it down to ten thousand.
Say that again, that's on the deductible for all?
It says property, all apparel deductible increased from twenty-five hundred to ten thousand.
Really?
Initially, Wright came in with a fifteen thousand dollar deductible, but we were able to negotiate that down to ten thousand. We are seeing Wright specially and also EMC do this on other schools as well. So they are going out to, I mean, looking at different companies. Um, this is the huge one, the wind hail one. And this is the one we have to make a decision on also. Um, so the wind hail deductible increased from twenty-five hundred dollars to one percent. The percent applies to the building limit, so for our main complex, this would be almost a five hundred thousand dollar deductible. If we would have wind hail, a wind hail claim.
So we'd pay the first five, five hundred thousand?
Five hundred thousand dollars at one percent.
It's not at all.
Well, why do we, yeah, now what is, what does wind hail include tornadoes?
I would assume it'd be tornadoes.
Uh, I feel like sometimes that's different. But does it include it?
I don't know, that's, that's the deal on this, that's, that was my, that was confusing to me.
Okay, so, well, this is, okay, so this is the re, the rest of their, their explanation, it says Wright is taking similar action for their other schools in the state. EMC for three years now has had a seventy-five thousand dollar per building wind hail, and are seeing them apply the one percent on some schools also. Um, Glatt Felter, um, is another carrier of ours in the state that writes schools, and they too have pushed higher wind hail deductibles. So this is very much an overall market trend, um, versus something specific to dual.
But this is so, fix you up about insurance companies, we're gonna, we're gonna eat that first five hundred thousand, but we're gonna pay, you know, fifteen thousand dollars more premium too. That's what's frustrating. Just for the property part, you know?
This is all a byproduct of the duratio. Which is, this EMC is, which a number of districts have, have dropped a number of schools. And schools are doing rightly so, because they're just all, I mean, schools can't afford to pay what they're asking, or they've, it's just been.
Well, wind, wind insurance.
There was an alternative they offered, right?
Yeah.
Right, there's, there's two different alternatives. Yeah, so, okay, so it says if you wanna purchase a separate product called wind hail deductible buyback, um, you can buy down the deductible to be either twenty-five thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars versus a possibility of five hundred thousand. And they're on the comparison, and that would be either, but to do that each year, like for this first year, it's gonna cost us twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-three, or twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and one dollars to buy down. So it'd be an additional besides the premiums that we have, it would be an additional-
We're gonna pay sixteen thousand plus more.
What's that?
We're gonna pay forty thousand dollars more just for the same insurance coverage then, aren't we?
If we choose to do that, but we don't have to.
If you do the buy down?
Yeah.
What, what I'm saying is, we had two twenty-five hundred dollar deductibles before.
Yep.
I know.
Yep.
Yep.
So it'll be worse coverage, but it will cost-
And cost more.
Yeah, it'll cost, well, seventy-six, eighty-six, sixteen thousand for that.
But like I said, it's not just us, I mean, insurance companies are doing this overall, but, yeah, when you have a few, well, you look at like Castlewood, I mean, just think of what that claim. I don't know if they, if, if this is where their insurance was through, I'm not sure, but, you know, I mean, it's like, was it, so.
So we're valued at fifty million then, is that, or the five hundred at one percent?
And that's the other number, I was wondering about too, Wade, is, is it off that fifty-four million, is that the one?
Yes.
Why don't they throw fire in there too and not ever have to pay a claim? You know what I'm saying, you know, other than a tornado?
Mm-hmm. So the choices tonight are renewal, which essentially we, it's probably, it's too late to go out for bid now. And then if we wanna do that extra buyout, buy down option.
Jeez.
So one, I think we will have to renew. I mean, I think it would be advantageous to us to go to market for next year.
Absolutely.
But I don't know that we're gonna find very much competitive, but it's worth a shot.
Makes me mad, is they knew, they know they got you over a barrel on this one.
If it's consistent across the market, then we might not see anything better.
Cause you're, you're gonna have to renew, you know, this time, I mean, it's getting late enough for the deal, you're gonna have to.
Well, it's already effective, July first, so, yeah.
Yeah. Well, what do we wanna spend on a buy down if you do, or, or do we just take the risk of that five hundred thousand dollars? If you get five hundred thousand dollars damage you're paying for.
I think we take the risk.
Run those other two numbers by me, those, can I, I saw that in my email, where's that at?
Yeah, they're in, they're on the-
On the optional quotes.
I see it, yeah.
They're on page twenty-seven. Other buy downs.
So the maximum pay is, 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 uh, four hundred and eighty thousand, that's, that's, I didn't real, I didn't understand that either. You know, one percent of the fifty-four would be five hundred and forty thousand, and they've got maximum payout of four hundred and eighty thousand. So I didn't know if that, if one percent is off a different number.
Right.
Didn't understand that either, why they did it.
Oh, I think what they're saying, because let's say we have damage three times, you'd, you'd be paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in deductibles, cause you, each occurrence would be a fifty thousand dollar deductible. I think what they're saying, what I, how I read it is that the maximum amount that we would have to pay would be four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred dollars. So you'd have to have, at fifty thousand dollars each, you'd have to have nine plus occurrences in order to pay that much.
Mm-hmm.
We've gotta, we gotta get balance of capital outlay, right, but I mean, I hate to say, I mean, you sure hate to have to work out a half a million in the event.
Sorry, I'm confused by the amount payable one. Is that the maximum amount that they will pay toward it, or do we pay them toward it?
I, I say it's what we pay, how I read it, cause it says fifty thousand each and every occurrence with a maximum amount payable of four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred. So what I would say is that would be the max that we would have to, that we would pay out, but we'd, like I said, we'd have to have multiple, multiple claims in order to pay that amount out.
Cause I read that, I read that differently.
Like opposite?
Opposite.
Me too.
That they only are gonna pay us four hundred and eighty.
I mean, we're buying insurance, it's gonna cost us fifty thousand, no, what was the cost of that insurance?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four thousand, okay. Would get you maximum, that would get you the what? Total deductible? You're gonna pay twenty, say this again, twenty-eight thousand?
If you pay twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and one dollars and thirty-four cents, if we would have an occurrence, we would have a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible.
Okay.
Yep.
For each occurrence.
Yep. But I read it, they'll only pay us up to five hundred and five. Or we pay max.
Well, let's take a gamble at, um-
That's gotta mean the max that we would pay, cause otherwise there's no point in buying insurance.
Right.
No.
Right. Right.
But you'd, like I said, you'd have to have multiple, multiple occurrences to to get up to that, if you're paying fifty thousand or twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, this, that doesn't sound like a good deal though, does it?
Well, none of it is.
Um, when, when can we go to the market for next year? When should we? I mean, has this been the, has this been the norm, is to do it in June? And prove it at the July meeting?
No, normally we have it by the June meeting, they just didn't have the stuff back to us this year. Um, I mean, we can go out for bid, it's, wouldn't go off, into effect until July first of next year.
Yeah.
But we can start looking at what else is out there, I'm not sure what else, I would say probably-
Talk to some other business managers and see what vendors they have.
Yeah, see what they, yeah.
I think there's no harm in just-
Looking, right.
Reaching out to them and asking, what would you offer us, if we compare it with this one, and be like, you guys, it's in the same scenario, we're not, yeah. And if we did that now, then we'd have-
Well, it'd be the whole year, I mean, we have the whole year to-
Right.
To research it and, yeah. I mean, I'm sure they're not gonna give us a quote until whatever we decide to do, they wouldn't give us a quote till close to the end of the school year, right.
They'd just give you a quote as of now, as of today, they'd say, here's what we'd offer you, it's only good for ninety days, so it could change.
So what, do we have insurance right today?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Cause it went out to crack July first.
Yeah, but we haven't okayed this.
I know, but we didn't have a choice of signing it, because we didn't get anything, we didn't have-
Okay, so we do have insurance with this policy, so now what do we gotta do?
Now we have to, we have to approve it.
That's our only choice.
We have to decide, we have to approve it, and we have to decide if we want to do the-
We don't have to approve, we gotta bless it.
Well, pretty much, yeah.
Cause it's already approved.
And then we have to decide on the options.
Yep.
I don't think those are really options, I, I just, I think we gotta take the risk, I mean, we're gonna pass a tornado.
I agree, cause I'm looking at-
Hopefully we're getting by that.
The fifty thousand dollar one, you're looking at seventy-five thousand dollars if it were to happen.
And you still got a deductible.
You still gotta pay twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. So I, I, I don't think that.
All right, let's first do the motion to renew. Let's do that first. I'll do that now.
Uh, anything else in there that stuck out that you're, um-
No, most of the other stuff, I mean, kinda, I mean, didn't change a whole lot. The property one was the, was the huge one there.
And red. No more red.
I mean, some years insurance jumps a lot, and some years that you think it does and it doesn't, but, boy, that's like sticking the butt.
The school buses, the deductible went from two, or from one thousand dollar deductible to two thousand. Otherwise, yeah, the big stuff is in the property.
Cyber liability, that looks all right, guys. That's with a company called Beasley.
That's the same.
Does that make sense?
It's exactly the same, it's just costing us a-
No, I know, but I mean, does that look appropriate?
Asking if it's covering what we needed to cover.
Makes sense. The other thing is, do board members not have any liability coverage at all with the school boards? Airs and emissions, that kinda thing?
I think you do with the associate school boards being a member of that. ASBSD.
Okay. Could we find out anything about that for the next meeting, what that is, or? Okay. Anything else, Leah?
I'm good, anybody else have anything? Take a motion to renew?
I will make a motion to renew.
I'll second the blessed.
Right, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then decide on the buy down option, are we going to not do that? That's what I was hearing, or anybody have a reason to try that?
I don't think so.
I mean, I just think we're gonna have to self-insure that five hundred thousand, be done with it.
So pass on the buy down? Do we have to like decide that, or can you just write that in?
Well, I'll just, just let them know that, yeah, cause that's, they're kinda leaving that, so we don't have to.
Past history, I mean, you, you, wind damage and that kinda thing, who do we have? We have roof damage, we have that.
And then claims?
Yeah.
That I can think of.
I don't think there's been since I've been here.
Right.
To my knowledge, anyway.
How about you, Chad, you've been there a longer time?
I can't think of the time we've had any damage. How much damage would you have to do to cost five hundred thousand?
Well, that'd be a tornado deal, you know.
Undo roof, undo building, yeah.
You're looking at a brick building and a may only do anything to those things.
That's a lot, ninety-some thousand, that's a lot for for that property part, when you look at the building, what it's made out of. Anyway, so, can happen, did the Castlewood school, but I think sometimes you just gotta self-insure, and community, I think, would understand our position on that, not to spend a twenty-eight thousand dollar deductible every year, just to have a deductible of-
Right.
Right, less, yep.
Yeah, so, okay.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we have to do anything, because unless we, I would think we'd only need a motion and a vote if we were gonna, if we were gonna add one of the two, so it's gonna be how they have it written.
Yep.
Without a buy now.
Sounds good.
With that motion, so.
Six thirty-nine, so we're gonna pause. We'll come back to the next agenda item, so we're gonna do the budget hearing now. And Ellen is going to lead us through that. And then we'll come back to the regular meeting.
Fifty-one, I think, huh? Is that what I'm thinking of? Fifty-one.
Cause fifty-one is, uh, yeah, so this is what was, on page fifty-one is what was published in the paper, which was exactly what was approved, um, at our, was it April meeting or May meeting? May meeting, May meeting. So that's what was published. So the summary, it would be, it will, will be the same as what, um, that was without any changes.
Other side?
Help, Caleb, help.
Yeah, it was in the little back pocket.
Stop back there.
There's a little, there's a little holder in there.
I'd like to do something on here to see it, it might, it might see it. Here we go. So it's gonna be the same as what we went through, um, at the last meeting. So the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six preliminary budget summary. So taxable valuations. Twenty-five payable, twenty-six valuations are over on the right side here. Um, Hamlin and Grant haven't been added to that, but we have, get very, very little from either one of those counties. Um, general fund levies, and these are set by the state, so the twenty-five payable twenty-six, um, are over on the right side. Ag being one point one-two-five, um, or occupied two point five-one-eight, and then other five point two-one-one per thousand dollars. A valuation, yeah, they value, yeah. Cause normally the valuations go up, but like I said, the, this year, one, yeah, some of the valuations went down. Um, so general fund expenditure, expenditures, five million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-two, and that would be using two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four of, um, fund balance. Couple of things we looked at were salaries is the, is the biggest expense, um, which is a little over four million dollars. And then, um, six hundred eighty-one thousand of revenue in that would be from wind towers, wind tower revenue. Preliminary capital fund levies. Proposed two thousand twenty-five payable, two thousand twenty-six, it's a little over two million dollars, um, and that amount's three hun, three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine per student, and we did it at five hundred and twenty-three students. Cause that was our enrollment in, is it December, Chad? Right, that we can use?
September.
September, okay. That was five twenty-three, so that would be. The amount, um, capital outlay expenditures, we have of one million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand and four dollars, and that would increase the, um, fund balance by five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine. Um, we do have school bus in there for not quite a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then our certificate, uh, rep- and then our certificate repayment, which is a little over six hundred thousand dollars. Preliminary special education, twenty-four, or sorry, proposed twenty-five payable, twenty-six, and that'd be the max, max levy would be one point four-six-two, which would be one million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-six thousand for revenue. Expenditures, we have at one million two hundred and forty-two thousand ninety dollars, which would be twenty-five thousand two hundred and forty-three from the fund balance. One of the things there increased would be addition of a sped director that we added this year. Food service expenditures, we have four hundred and six thousand. The budget includes a hundred thousand dollar deficit transfer from general fund, and that's what we did this year too, so I put the same in for next year, and just the climbing prices of products that we get. Revenue sources, three hundred and six thousand is what we're, and that'll just, you know, fluctuates based on the meal reimbursement rates, and we don't know those yet. Um, we should, I think. Other enterprise expenditures, and that, this would be preschool, one hundred and eight thousand one hundred and eighty-eight, and that includes a thirty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollar deficit for preschool, and that would be if we hire a second paraprofessional in that area, which we have not done yet, but. Any questions?
So twenty-five, twenty-six is, we're three years in on the wind turbine full payment?
Um.
Starts to decline.
There's only six hundred eighty versus seven hundred.
We're already declining.
So we're already declining.
First, yeah, so no, we're further, yeah.
Then it would be the fifth or sixth year, then. Is that right?
That is way off, yeah.
For some of them, you know what I mean? Because that would have been probably the, yeah, because the first one, for the first one project, because each year, it's gonna go down and, I mean.
I think they're all commissioned the same year. We had a little from the northeast or northwest, and a little from, didn't we have three different buckets contributing to that? Or you think they were done in separate years?
Well, I don't know about se, there was, they, I know they would, came in at, I think, slightly different times, if I remember.
They did it different months, I know, but, yeah, I could be right, I could be wrong. I know that, we didn't get much out of that northwest the first year.
So.
One year, twenty-twenty-one, which is the Crown Ridge, first three bucks, seven times, and then in twenty-twenty-two.
The other three started.
We had three, yeah, so this is what's, yep.
Twenty-twenty-two, uh, no.
Yeah. But that twenty-twenty-one, I mean, that was considered the first year, even though we only got a little over, not quite four thousand dollars, that was, yeah.
Year. Yes, that was the one that.
Yep. So then it goes down.
Ninety-five thousand.
Yeah.
Right.
I think they commissioned in December when they did, so you got the one month deal, see, and they wanna get.
So for that one, for that one, it's the sixth year, the other ones, it's the, the fifth year.
For like Dual Harvest North, the big one, we're in the fifth.
This will be your fifth year, so that'll decrease by a hundred thousand.
That's what I'm wondering, see, so.
Yeah, this, well, yeah, so this is, yeah, so Dual Harvest, yep, so whoops, I have my cursor over. So next year.
Twenty-twenty-seven. Five, twenty-six.
Right.
We got the full off this year.
Right.
Two, two farms, but Tecanca one, that'll decrease two.
Yes, because that goes down twenty percent per year.
Yeah.
I mean, until twenty-twenty-eight, and then I don't know what the status is of that project right now. That's our projected, that it would go back up again in twenty-twenty-eight, but I don't know what's.
From the south.
Yeah.
Did that? Did that rule get changed, so that first year's prorated out? That doesn't count as a year like it did with that?
That, that did change. There is something that changed on that, I know, yeah.
There's two rules, but one didn't change till midsummer or something, and it was a oversight of the legislature, I think. So that, or the law went into effect, but that still happened because it.
Yeah, he can't, he can't say.
But I don't think it'll happen again, see, is what I'm saying. But I don't think, I think a new wind tower system coming on, you get the full one year, I think.
I'm just, I'm just anticipating, what's the delta gonna be when, you know, when costs go up and then that revenue, until we get this south project coming in with potentially, I mean, we're already, we went to the, the fund balance for two hundred and some thousand this year. I mean, are we gonna be going to the fund balance for three to four hundred thousand next year, assuming, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I mean, that gets to be real money real fast here for the next, I guess. Just trying to. I mean, I understand we're building capital outlay balance, I mean, we're, we're fund balance right now, and there's what, three? I don't remember where it is now, two and a three?
Yeah, but this year, so projected for twenty-twenty-five, we had seven hundred thousand dollars, so that's, it was just a little over seven hundred thousand dollars is what we had for wind revenue. But we used about not quite five hundred thousand of that, because we added back to our cash balance two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
Yep, so we're still four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollars if we wanted to have the wind tower revenue.
In general, yeah, in general, right, I know, right, that's where, I mean, that's what I'm just.
In general fund, yeah.
We had a cash balance in capital, they have one, four point one million. That's under cash, you're right.
Yep, yep, and two million of that is in that, um, CD, I was thinking iron, I'm like, that's not the right word, this, yeah, CD.
But that's in there.
That's in there, that's included in it.
CD's in there too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, just, we're not saving for rainy day fund, we're saving for what's inevitable when this leaves, so just want the public to know that and.
Yeah, to pay for things.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're gonna need all of that, that's my point, I mean, we know there's people looking at that balance saying, oh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of balance there, well,
Why do you have a balance?
It doesn't last very long, you know, when we start to lose the wind revenue.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. It's for a reason. Do we have to end the budget hearing? We just say we're done?
Ellen, do you have these sheets with you? Can I ask a couple of questions on them? Do you have it in hand or not? You got, the ones we just.
Well, the. They're in the packet, right?
Yeah, yeah, fifty-one, fifty-two.
Okay.
Can, and the capital outlay that, I'll let you get it first.
Yep, I'm.
Down the bottom, towards the bottom.
On fifty-two?
Fifty-one.
Page fifty-one.
Fifty-one, okay.
Five seventy-eight, two twenty-nine, with the parentheses around it, it says, uh.
So that's revenue. So what that means is that we would be putting five hundred seventy-eight thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars into our cash balance, if we have the revenue on the budget, and if we have the expense that we're planning on the budget.
Okay, that's all that is, is an increase, right?
That, that, yeah, when it's a, in parentheses there, it means it would go to the fund balance, so we would have that.
And that was my question, so it went to, so goes to the fund balance of the capital outlay?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. That's all I need to know on that one. Next page. Board of Education, sixty-four thousand, what's that?
Pay for our salaries?
Yeah, we don't have sixty-four thousand dollars worth of salaries.
No, there's, there's a lot of, there's a, actually, some of that, I think, like the liability insurance, the, yep, comes out of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, like all of the advertising, everything that, like, all the publications and the newspaper, all that stuff comes out of there. I'm trying to think of what else.
Because I'm not getting my fair share if that's.
Yeah, no, if you're not getting your fair share, it's that much.
Talk about your per diem and that's the next thing.
Yep. But no, there's, there's, there's certain things that we budget under, yeah.
That's what I was, that was all the questions, I thought that sounded.
Yeah, that we budget under the board, that's where, yeah, that's just where it comes out of.
Is there like ASBSD stuff?
Right, some of the membership stuff, I think there's some things there too, that, right, that we just budget, because it's like for the whole school, so it gets budgeted under the board.
Okay.
There's some graduation expenses, I think we pay out of the, that stuff gets paid out of the, is budgeted in the board, yeah.
Just on that, that's all I had.
Yep.
Okay, so we're good on the budget here, side of things? So we can go back to our regular meeting? So we're gonna go back to the new business section, and we're gonna go to the audit proposal, and that, I had sectioned off, and now I have to go back. Page twenty-eight, nope, twenty, thirty, page thirty, ELO. So we just have to pick them as our auditor again?
Well, wait, and on page, on page thirty-four, uh, the, well, the, the top paragraph, two, three, the fourth paragraph down, their fee, so seventeen thousand dollars, which is the same as what they quoted this last year, but we ended up paying more, because we ended up having over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant revenue, so they had to do
Extra stuff.
Extra stuff, so it was, yep, so it ended up being a little more than that, but I think this is the same amount that they, we were quoted this last year.
And we, uh, there's not that many choices out there in this area for auditors?
We had a hard time finding, yeah, finding one after the last one we had.
Yep.
Would no longer do it.
There's just, who wants to audit schools as a job? I guess not a lot of people, yeah.
We got, you gotta use GAS standards on them, because it's a government entity, right?
Right, they have.
So what do they have to do extra, just?
No, because we had over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in like federal revenue, there's some additional stuff that has to be done during the audit.
That we won't have this year.
We won't have this year.
We won't.
No, we won't have it this year, no, we won't have it this year. Last year, we had it, and a lot of that, I think, was due to the Esser stuff, because nothing got.
Oh.
It didn't get done like over, if we would have had some of it reimbursed over the last, yeah, couple of years, yeah.
That was the issue.
It wasn't.
Okay.
Yep, so we.
So it'll be about seventeen thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll take a motion to approve them as our auditor in that proposal.
Joel makes motion to do it.
Joel, good. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is the fairgrounds deed. What you summarize that, Chad, on page thirty-six.
Thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Uh, yeah, this is what Todd, the way they sent us, this is what we're working on with our fairgrounds, sorry, our fairgrounds situation, so this is just a part of the process that all three entities are gonna have to pass, so.
So do you explain what he's doing here with these quick claim deeds?
Basically, starting over from scratch.
So everybody's gonna, we're gonna deed this back to who? Is that the county?
The county, yeah.
Okay, so that's this whole thing with all these little deals. I just wanna make sure we're not deeding back the school, because I.
No, nothing's coming back.
I didn't know any of these.
I know, these are all different.
No, we squared, we squared it away, so everything's, everything's going to the county.
So that's football field and everything?
Yes, and then they'll lease, they'll, like, they have, well, we currently have now, then they'll lease back, so like, we'll lease the football field and practice field back from the county.
So this is giving everything back to them, and everybody's doing that, them, the county, the city, whoever has.
And then they're gonna split it up the way it, it should be split up, because like, the city then will have the baseball field and the softball field, the school will have the football field, and then the remainder of it will remain with the county.
Okay. What was our position before on the football field?
It, it was the same, that hasn't changed, it's just, there were so many issues with the boundaries and.
Yes, I understand.
And what was down on paper, so.
I'm wondering, we, we didn't own the football field anyway.
No, we'd never, we'd just, yep, yep.
That's all I was wondering about.
No, we've leased it, yeah.
And this is just drawing lines.
I understand that.
To get everything straightened out, yep.
I was out there for two hours marking these points, and I got lost.
Were you really?
Yeah.
My tape measure wasn't long enough. Okay.
So, yes, so you guys got a, a motion for me and Ellen to sign this.
So move, Wade.
Okay.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, moving on to the policy on page thirty-eight. Policy BBB, school board elections.
Yes, with legislation, they changed it, and you can only have school elections on those two dates. One being the first Tuesday after the first Monday in June, and the other one in January, which we always have ours in June. It also says that you can combine these with your district or municipal elections if you choose to, so we will tackle that down the road, but those are the dates. We are no longer setting dates for school board elections, it is on that date.
Okay.
Because we were told it has to be that way.
Yes.
Just take a motion for that policy.
Just got one question. Does that mean the municipal would have to come on that date, or you could change that date if you wanted to put it with the municipal?
The municipal can, if, if we choose, if there, if there's a municipal on that same date, we can choose to combine them.
But it still has to be on that date.
It has to be on that date, yep.
It's always one of them, okay, thank you.
Before, we had three different choices of dates that we could do.
Yep.
Okay, so they'd have to come and follow the same date?
They're gonna have the same thing.
Got it, okay. Thanks.
Okay, take a motion?
So move, Joel.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The next is the resignation of John Sather from middle school basketball coach.
John coached with Chris Holmer and helped out the last couple of years, so thank you for your time and commitment, John.
Yeah, thank you. Or I'll take a motion.
Wade, motion.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is the resignation of Amanda Hillishine from counselor.
Amanda was our second school counselor that we hired with COVID dollars. She took another position at the Sioux Valley School. So thank her for her time as well, and I will talk about this position and what we're planning moving forward in my superintendent report.
Okay, thanks Amanda for your time here. I'll take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the resignation.
Joel, second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is surplus items.
Um, we have like fifteen Chromebooks that Mr. Gearing is surplusing, so that's what we have on our list.
Sounds good. Need any other info? Or I'll take a motion.
Motion, Wade.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The next is, we'll review the strategic plan, bullet points on school management on page thirty-nine.
Uh, just a little overview here. Joel, Leah, and myself met early last week, last Tuesday. Our biggest thing that we, we put into this was what to call this particular, we're gonna take out the facilities piece, and we went back and forth on what exactly to call this, so we went with kind of a generic, just a school management title on this. Now, that encompasses a lot of things, and if you look here of the six bullet points, they're kind of an overarching goal or theme. What we didn't do with this, and what my plan to do with this, is to sit down with Gail from Studer and put in some benchmarks and some measurable goals to build off of each of these strategic goals, so a couple of these were a part of what I gave you guys as a sample last time, so I'll just go through them briefly. Increase enrollment is a goal with targeted marketing and enhancing program offerings to attract new students. Second bullet there, implement long-term financial planning and reporting, multi-year forecast. That includes capital leads, a lot of the stuff that we just talked about in regards to wind dollars, those types of things. The third one is our continuous school improvement and fostering, fostering that culture here, which is ultimately what we've been doing here the last two years. And then I just talked a little bit about the rounding and our work on the strategic plan, so. Next one is optimizing operational efficiency, identifying and implementing cost-saving measures, which we try to do on most everything. Obviously, we've already talked about some of those things tonight as well, but to continue with that mindset and, and get bid, a lot of these things we have to get bids on, but you know, getting some competitive pricing in a, you know, a cutthroat economy right now. Investing in proactive maintenance of facility upgrades, promoting health, safety, adaptable learning, working environments through growth and, and student success. And then the last one here, we actually got from another school district, which, 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 which we kinda liked, is just maintaining a strong reputation and close-knit, small-town identity of, of the dual school district as a high-quality education community. And I think that's probably one thing that we do hang our hat on, and it's probably one of the biggest things that came out of our, our work with Studer, is that that's what the kids like, that's what's keeping a lot of the teachers here. It's, it's that small-knit, small-town community, and everybody knowing everybody, so we thought this is a good start, and. So, um, we thought this is a good start, and, uh, again, my plan is to take this with Gail and work on it and, and, and put together some, some goals and bring that back, and we can talk about it, talk about it again. She's here, uh, beginning of August again for onsite, so.
Chad, we got this, we're gonna replace that center section, Chad.
Yep, yep.
You know, to put this in that, that, it's a whole different format, you got definition, goal, metric.
Yep.
How are we gonna?
That's what, that's what she's gonna-
That's what Studer will help work with, yes.
That's gonna be the tough thing, is to get that all in our neat little column.
Yep.
But I like, you know, I like these goals, you know, or I like these bullet points, it's just, it's a pretty wide diverse-
It is.
Yeah, I was kinda thinking that, it was kinda a little bit all over the place, like, were some of these supposed to go in other areas? Would I, like academics or communications, or?
They did, but at the same time-
I kinda looked and it didn't, I mean, I started to think, but-
We wanted to do a more of a financial thing, but that didn't go, so.
We got a piece of that in there, so.
Financials, facilities, and then other, this kind of, um-
It's kind of a miscellaneous, and a couple's a lot of things.
That's what I thought some of these could go, maybe.
And they could, and they potentially, they potentially could.
Yeah, Gail figured it out, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, uh, the, this is a good list, I'd like Gail's input, where it, it does just feel a little bit over.
And we had that, we had that same discussion too, so.
But I like the bullet points. Any feedback from any, Wade, Tony, these weren't there either, right? Yeah?
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't know, the last one probably does fit under parent community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I think otherwise, I, I guess, I mean, yeah, the financial aspect of it, um, I don't really know. Uh, I mean, culture's been a huge thing for me, I guess, I don't know where else you'd put that in the strategic plan than where you've got it right now.
Yeah, right.
Um, I, I think that's-
Under student behavior, maybe?
I mean, it is kind of a catch-all, it's school management, so it, it's a little bit of a wide funnel to begin with. Um, so it, I think if something doesn't have a specific home, it can probably be a little bit, um, they don't all have to necessarily relate to each other.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'd like Gail's opinion and see what she has to say.
Yeah, it's a, it's a start, it'll be obviously a work in progress, yep.
The hardest part is starting, so you got us there.
She'll be here when, you said?
Uh, first part of August, I think she's coming.
And we don't really need to take a motion on this.
No, we don't.
It's just a review, so, nothing there. All right. And then we'll go on to the report section, Mr. Sherman, back to you, next.
Yeah, I got a short report, but not a lot has happened, uh, other than weather between June and July here. Uh, staffing here, just gonna give you guys an idea of where we're at, what we got left before school starts. I have a kitchen position open and, um, hiring for para positions, those two positions close on Thursday. I have quite a few kitchen applicants, but I do not have any para applicants right now, so I may have to extend that out for another week or two. Uh, late resignation with Amanda Hillishine, the school counselor position. Um, we are moving forward, we are going to absorb this position. So I've met administratively with the two principals, and we have also met with Jessica Folk, who will be our, our lone counselor. Um, moving forward, uh, we, we have a strong need for one-on-one school counseling. Um, but we're going to have to do a little triage moving forward and, 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 you know, get to, get to our high flyers, the kids that, that need it the most, and not that we're gonna neglect the other kids, but moving forward, we're gonna have a big caseload in that neighborhood. Uh, I was very upfront that I do not want Jess Folk to limit her, uh, classroom time in the elementary where she goes in and does lessons. Um, and then the other piece here, uh, was our district testing coordinator, which takes about a month of organizing and, and, and putting that together, which Amanda was in charge of. And I have sat down with Hannah Swenson, and, uh, she is going to be doing that for next year, so it really fits into her neck of the woods, because there's a lot of, uh, special education accommodations that coincide with it. So she's gonna, she'll be cognizant of all of those things, and she'll make it, she'll make it work. And the position isn't what it, what it once was, when it was paper, pencil, and manipulatives and labels, all, everything's online now, so it's, um, outside of a couple meetings and some organizing there for a couple weeks, it's, it's not, it's not bad. Uh, roof update, we had some, uh, leaking that went on from the, from the tornado night, with all of the rain that we received. And we had basically have a, we have a spot up on the roof between the new addition and our old Cardinal gym. And it's basically from about me to the wall, and it's, it's, it's basically a dugout. And then it has drains in it, so if there's ever any water, they, it goes down the drains. Well, basically what happened is that area filled up. And not only did it fill up, it filled up because the great, the drains were plugged, but it went over, if you've ever been on a flat roof, the, the rubber goes up the side, it went over the side of that, and then went right down the wall. So this MJ Dulson, who's the company that did our, did the roofing for the new project, I called him, they were Johnny on the spot next day, they came up, and they fixed a lot of those seams. Um, he was very upfront, saying, hey, you have a drain issue problem. Um, they were great, they met with, uh, Andrew and I, we did a Zoom about two days later, uh, with Brent Haslin, uh, Redlingers from Watertown, and MJ Dulson. And Redlingers came up the very next day, and they unplugged the two drains. So instead of, of getting a whole new drainage system, it's just something that Andrew's gonna have to go up onto the roof every couple months and make sure that those things-
Full of leaves?
It was full of, uh, some sort of a tab and some algae was buildup in there. He just got it, he took the cover off and basically, uh, uh, took a screwdriver and got it out, so.
Sounds yuck.
I mean, the cha- I shouldn't say the chances of us getting a lot of rain like that, or, it's, everything's possible here in the Bermuda Triangle, but I mean, that, that much, yeah, I've been here long enough to know, that much rain, I mean, ten, eleven inches and, and no drainage is, something's bound to happen, so.
But, but, um, did we have a lot of damage from one?
There was not a lot of damage, we had two little, it was actually the same spot in the boys locker room and the girls locker room, and it's like a transition piece, uh, one of them has a metal piece over it in one, and the other one was sheet rock in the other, so he's gonna put a metal piece over the other one to, so they're the same. So it didn't warrant, I didn't feel, I went and looked at all of it when I got back, uh, from vacation, I didn't feel that it warranted, uh, an insurance claim, I don't think we would've, would've-
We aren't gonna-
Not for five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, five hundred dollars. But, uh, no, the custodians were great, they, they cleaned it all up, and it's, I think we'll be, we'll be good moving forward.
So is that part of the old roof, part of the new roof, like, is that something that, is it a design flaw that should've been caught?
No, it's a drainage flaw.
Me, it is.
But how long, like, is it with the new building, or is it with the old?
Yeah, they would've put it, this, on the new building, but it's also where it connects to the old building, where it went over.
Okay.
So.
But it's on the old building, it's on the old?
It's on the, it's on the new.
New, touching the old.
It's on the new, touching the old.
But what overflowed? Where's, where was the drain plugged, on the old or new?
Yeah, in the new part, yeah. I wish I had a picture to, to show you, but it went over into the old, so.
It's a drain issue, though.
It's not leaking through the rubber.
It's a drain got plugged, when's, when's that gonna happen?
That's, yeah.
I'm sure they'll have it, they'll be on it, checking it, it won't happen again.
Right, yeah, so, so that was, that was promising news.
But it didn't get on the wood floor or anything?
No, that was my biggest fear, is it would've gotten there, that doesn't work, yeah. Um, upcoming events for me, I got my superintendent's conference Monday through Wednesday next week. Uh, joint convention is, uh, seventh and eighth. Um, I see Friday is the deadline, or maybe you already got everybody signed up?
We'll, we'll talk about it, Harris.
You got it on yours, okay. And then regular board meeting, back to school fair, and first day of school, so, once after the fourth, uh, happens, we're right, right into it.
August things.
Yes, not far away, so, that's all I've got.
Okay. Sorry, I lost my agenda, who's next?
Uh, Ms. Han, sorry. Well, mine is short and sweet, I just wanted to do a quick recap, I was able to go to the principals' conference in June. Um, I got to hear a lot about school law, which was fascinating, because, again, coming from Minnesota, South Dakota, there are some things that are different, but for the most part, it's the same. Um, a lot of those focused on truancy and special education. And then I went to a session on, um, options for ACT prep, since we're requiring ACT for all of the juniors now as the state testing, and then a session on teacher evals, which was really interesting.
Uh, can you go back to your ACT, what are we gonna do then, there? Do we have a plan yet?
We don't have a plan yet, but we're looking at options.
Okay, I'm just curious, as a mom, you know?
Does that start this year?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So every student will have to take that and will use that as a-
And in the junior year?
As a guideline where they're at.
It replaces the smarter balance for them.
Makes sense.
Okay, fun, well, good, did you meet a lot of people, too?
Yes, yep. Good networking.
Awesome. All right, Mr. Rill?
I don't have anything for, for June and July, I was not able to attend the principals' conference, so.
Yeah, okay, good to know. Uh, all right, Ellen, your report?
Thing is joint convention, August seventh and eighth, I have Leah for Thursday, Danae for Thursday, Chad, are you going Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else planning on?
I'll probably go Thursday.
You're gonna Thursday also?
Yeah, register me.
Register you, okay?
I've got a work conflict now.
Okay. Okay.
If I'd've known that, I wouldn't have gone.
Are you going, Todd?
Thursday, Katie?
Thursday and Friday, or just Thursday, or, just Thursday, okay?
In eighteen year school.
What's that?
And Hannah.
Hannah's gonna go too, okay, I am not gonna go.
Yeah, okay.
Cause I'm-
I won't be staying, I'll just drive down.
That's all, everybody is.
Yeah, so we can carpool if they want, or whatever, we can get school vehicles, so just, you have to coordinate that.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, as I was gonna say, is the warrant, the minibus, who's driving that?
Actually, get eight in, if, if everybody's going, you can get eight in the, either the Yukon or the, um-
I was like, who's crawling in the way back? Maybe I'll go.
You going down, Todd?
Okay, we'll figure that out, but thank you, okay, so now you're good on that.
Okay, and then, yeah, just, you're in, so I'm in full swing on that.
Mm-hmm.
Have to work on the, um, annual report and stuff, I'll be working on that this month and next month. Um, along with, as I have your training, new business manager training, so I will be leaving tomorrow morning, um, coming back Thursday night for the new business manager training. And then we have food service training, July twenty-first and twenty-second in Brandon, so Anita and I will be going on the twenty-first, all the kitchen staff will be going the twenty-second, so hence, him being gone to conference, we will have nobody at the school on the twenty-second.
Ah.
So we have, cause all, cause, cause Nikki, yes, cause Nikki does some of the food service stuff, so she will be going to this training also. Um, I will be, and Chad will be.
Do you need to, like, put a note on the door or anything about that?
We will put something on the door and try to remember to let the, like, um, FedEx, U P S, whatever, know, so they, yeah, don't deliver those days, or they track down the janitors to get in or something, yeah, on that, yep. So we'll be gone to those, and then the other thing I didn't have on there, um, and I asked Danae about this, cause I, because I'm gone the next three days, I had to have payroll done, so we'll do the, your board payroll both, um, this month and next month, next month, cause I had to get payroll done already. So you're not gonna get your seventy-five dollars.
You can blame me if I said it, I said it was mine.
What does that mean, we won't get it till next month?
You won't get it till next month.
For two on next month.
Cause I have payroll done already, because I, um, contract payroll is Friday, and I leave-
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning.
We didn't know who's all gonna show up today.
Yeah.
It'll just have to work out.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And Wade, N E S C?
Okay, we met on the sixteenth of June, um, financial report, um, again, pretty straightforward there. I did review a little bit on sped assessment reimbursements to the district. I believe we had an eighty-three hundred dollar, I don't know if we left it on credit with them, or let them carry it over, I think. Um, and then they did talk about the twenty-five, twenty-six assessments, that went up. I think we're up, yeah, we're up like sixty-two thousand from year, year over year.
How much?
Sixty-two thousand.
Wow.
Gross.
For dual, you know, so, um, assistant directors' report, uh, reviewed auto maintenance, uh, record-keeping. Uh, director's report, uh, she's working on filling open O T position at this time. Um, contacted Co-op Arc to put together a cost estimate for the building repairs down in Haytie. Uh, we looking at doing some, uh, they've got some issues there with that building to get fixed. Technology assessment, uh, just working on a plan for the Co-op, just to increase and improve on the technology that they're using. Board of advisors' report, I, they discussed N E S C staffing, um, reviewed, uh, the sped forms, and talked about C P I training dates. Any questions?
Nope, good.
I will say, I mean, the, the new directors, she's really, she's doing quite a few things, can, I think, as a whole, seems to be, so.
That's awesome.
She's just about completed her first year.
Yeah, just see her first year is done right now. Awesome, thank you. Uh, next meeting, I didn't write down, Chad told us already, August fourth, nope, eleventh. And we'll pick the time, but not if it changes in the next meeting, I, I mean, any other business? The pick, you have to pick the time of the meeting, every annual meeting, and that's next, but, not that it will change, probably, but, so I'm not telling you a time yet, because we didn't pick it yet. So sorry. Uh, other business? No? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn this regular meeting.
Joel moves.
Julia, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Seven twenty-one. All right, and then, yep, oh, does anybody need a break, or move on to the next one? I'm okay, if you guys are okay. And then Ellen starts it off.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order, and we'll be in the office for Danae and Wade. I think you need to copy of your own.
Yeah, we have to, like, stand and stuff, don't we?
You have to stand and raise your right hand or whatever, and. So Idae Nielsen of Dual School District nineteen-four.
Idae Nielsen of Dual District nineteen-four.
Have been elected as school board member.
Have been elected as school board member.
Of the above-named school district.
Of the above-named school district.
In the above-named county.
In the above-named county.
South Dakota.
South Dakota.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the laws and constitution of the United States.
That I will support the laws and constitution of the United States.
And the state of South Dakota.
And the state of South Dakota.
And to faithfully perform the duties of membership.
And to faithfully perform the duties of membership.
And by filing a bond if required by law and having it approved.
And by filing a bond if required by law and having it approved. Chad?
Have you signed that already?
Yep.
And there's your certificate.
Thank you. And then Wade signed his already too, I think.
Oh, you signed that one, okay, I can take that one too, that's fine.
Did you say ditto?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Hi, Wade Guberud of Dual School District nineteen-four.
Hi, Wade Guberud of Dual School District nineteen-four.
Having been elected as school board member.
Having been elected as school board member.
Of, of the above-named school district.
Of the above-named school district.
In the above-named county.
In the above-named county.
South Dakota.
South Dakota.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the laws and constitution of the United States.
That I will solemnly swear that I will support the laws and constitution of the United States.
And the state of South Dakota.
And the state of South Dakota.
And to faithfully perform the duties of membership.
And to faithfully perform the duties of membership.
And by filing a bond if required by law and having it approved.
And by filing a bond if required by law and having it approved.
Certificate. Put mine on your desk, and you can have them.
See, to me, we just read that. You just, yeah.
All right, so next then we need to, um, elect the board chairperson, uh, for fiscal year twenty-six. Is there any nominations?
I'll make a motion to nominate Danae, second. Someone else has to make a motion, nomination cease, correct?
Yeah, you, you, yeah, you just nominated her, so somebody can make a motion and second and that nomination cease and you do an unanimous ballot for Danae.
And I can't do it, so somebody else.
Motion, okay.
Tony, second.
A nomination cease, and a cast unanimous ballot for, for Danae. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carried. So then I will turn the meeting over to Danae and she can do the election of the vice chairperson.
Alright, I'll take an election for the vice chair for fiscal twenty-six.
Who is it now?
It's Wade now. Any other nominations?
I'd make a motion to nominate Wade.
Second.
I make a motion that nomination cease.
And do a unanimous ballot.
And do a unanimous ballot for Wade.
For Wade.
I think that's all, I don't think we, I don't know if we can.
By the way, yes, you can.
Not if you made the motion to nominate somebody, you can't, can't be a part of the group that's stopped.
So I can second it. That's my
I was gonna say, I can second it.
The neighbor would have to.
I can second it.
You do that to me.
I don't ever do anything anymore, I can second that one. I just get to say all the words, I don't get to vote. Perfect. All in favor, say aye, I think. Yeah, opposed, motion carried, good. Alright, we got that out of the way. Now, we'll adopt the agenda. This is the long one. Any changes to the agenda that you know of? Alright, I'll take a motion.
Joel moves.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, no public comment or visitors, and then we will go through the conflict of interest disclosures.
I will just go through these. We have three conflict of interest disclosures. The first one is Danae Nielsen as a school board member. Her conflict is her husband, Tony Nielsen, who is the school electrician as well as a coach. Second conflict of interest is Tony Conald, also a school board member, and his spouse is the administrative assistant in the high school. And the last one is myself, school district superintendent. My conflict is my spouse is a elementary school teacher. So those are the three conflicts of interest.
We don't do anything.
You just need to approve them.
Oh, we do.
And then I'll need signatures from you two on the meetings then.
Okay, so I'll take a
I'll make a motion to approve the conflict of interest.
Yes.
Thank you. Wade, you said that? Yeah, Leah and then Wade.
Yeah.
But I said, you probably, you guys both need to
Yeah.
Not voting.
Yeah.
To avoid a conflict of interest.
Agree. So then really on favor saying aye is Joel.
Well, all free.
Aye.
Endure as well as endure.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Motion carried, got it, good. Okay. So then we'll move on to the new business. And this is all for next year. Our official depository, so currently it's DMV National Bank, and so then our decision is to keep it there for the next year. You would vote for that, so we're gonna
Yeah.
Yes.
Last year we did them all together.
I think we did them all together.
Yep, we just went through all of them and
Okay, then I'm just gonna keep reading.
So if that's who you, if, yeah, if we need to change them, we can change them.
Yeah, we'll keep.
Keep that one, okay?
Official newspaper, Clear Lake Courier, keep that the same. Authorized representative, so Chad Schirnbeck is the Title One Coordinator, Vocational Education Program, Federal Programs Officer, and designated to call off school along with the board chair, may, but may appoint another staff member to act on his behalf during his absence, all that.
Chad, are you gonna still be Title One Coordinator?
Title One's different.
Yes.
Oh, then what, Hannah's?
Yes.
Yep, she's, if you look, she's down below if you keep reading, yeah, yep. So her duties are down there.
Ellen, her, she's representing the official purchasing agent, food service program, South Dakota Retirement System, unemployment insurance, workman's compensation program, property liability, vehicle health, life and other insurances. Charged with the custody of the current assets of all school district funds, surety bond set at fifty thousand, same for fiscal twenty-six, I assume. Co-Title One Representative, State and Federal Grants Program. Do we need to decide on that? Surety bond, is that a separate line item anywhere? Okay, sounds good. Todd Rolf is co-Title One Representative and Homeless Liaison, Kitty Hahn, Title Five? Nine, I don't know my numerals, I should have asked that ahead of time. Title Nine Coordinator. Hannah Swenson is the District Special Education Director, Coordinator of Five-O-Four Disabilities, District Testing Coordinator, and that is new for fiscal twenty-six. Okay, then we're gonna move on to the salary amount, so meeting salaries for mileage for board meetings and NESC meetings. So the current, this is all the current for this year, so regular meetings is seventy-five dollars. We can change it, but it can't go more than one sixty-six per meeting. Do we need to change it? I'm okay as is. You guys okay as is? Okay?
If we could get it on time, it'd help.
Geez, Ellen.
They only used to pay quarterlies.
I know, it's true.
I know it.
That's true. Who's got cash? Alright, special meetings at seventy dollars, any changes there? No, no change there. Committee meetings, forty dollars, any change there? And then mileage, we just use the state mileage rate. Right now. Changes every July, I think. Okay. Okay, so then the appointments, so we have these committees, so Finance, Policy, Academic and NESC, City Board of Equalization for Clear Lake and then one for Gary, so let's see. Finance Committee, it's gonna be Joel and Danae this year. So Joel, you're on. Policy Committee and Academic Committee, so currently the Policy Committee really hasn't been meeting. We've just kind of been reviewing them as me and Tony, but we haven't met, we didn't meet this whole year, we just kind of review what Chad sends out and sends to us.
So you really don't do any more than we do as a board?
No.
Do we need that committee?
Certain times, we're gonna have to review policy.
And I do think that it puts a little bit more action on Tony and I to be more attentive to the policies and the emails that the ASBSD sends out and, and kind of give our opinion. I'm not saying that has to stay that, I'm just saying that's what we're currently doing. And currently, so right now, it's Tony and myself on policy. Academic is Tony and Wade currently, and then NESC is Wade currently.
Academic is Tony and Wade?
Yep.
And then Policies is Tony and Danae?
Currently, and NESC is currently Wade. I was gonna offer, we have to make some decisions, so Policy, I'm indifferent on. Academic right now, it's Wade and Tony, but then Leah, you're not on one now, since you're not on Finance. So I was wondering
I would move to Academic if
It's either that or you take the NESC representative from, so Wade's not on two things. You take one of those. So Wade, what's your opinion on her either going to Academic or NESC?
I'm fine doing the NESC, I mean, I will say there's a bit of a learning curve, I mean, I'm willing to stay on there, I mean, but she feels strongly about it and wants to do it, I guess whichever, but it's
Do you feel strongly about a committee?
I
Nope. Of any of those, I guess, the little left ones.
So, yeah, that makes sense if he wants to stay on that since he's been on it and then
So Wade, Wade, are you okay coming off Academic and Leah going on?
Yeah, I don't, that's fine.
So Leah and Tony, Tony's staying on?
Yeah, I'd like to stay on.
Yep. And then Policy. Does anybody want to be on Policy?
It don't matter to me.
I mean, we all read the stuff, so it's, I mean, it's
Or we just dissolve the committee altogether, or, I feel, I like keeping it just in case something comes up, sorry, we said that already.
I can stay on there, it doesn't matter.
And I can too, actually, so. Yep. And then City Board of Equalization, Clear Lake, that was you, Joel, right?
It was, yeah, and I, I do not know, what is the date you have to go there and do whatever?
It's always the third, let's see, I can't remember that. It's the third Monday in
August, but I don't No, I have no idea actually. I think it is, but I can't, I'd have to go back and look.
You gotta go to Gary then? Are you going to Gary?
I went one time and
They look at you stupidly.
They do.
Yeah, but somebody's supposed to be there from the school, that's the thing.
And what do you do? Just listen?
You listen?
Yeah, to the financial stuff, cause they go through some of this stuff. I don't know what they
No, they don't, the only thing at that meeting, I mean, cause I was at the city, the only thing at that meeting, it's not a regular meeting, it is only to listen if anybody wants to contest their evaluations for their property. And it's only for the city, so like in Clear Lake, it's only the city, in Clear Lake, it's only the city, in Gary, it's only the city, it's not county stuff, county handles that. So that's all it would be, he might not have anybody, he might have a meeting and have nobody show up.
There wasn't.
And we could keep it the same, knowing that
Yeah, and I know they look at you like, what are you here for?
Yeah. Joel, Clear Lake?
Third Monday in
Wade, Gary?
In August.
Yeah, that's fine.
There's a specific set date.
Maybe send us a, if he can find, or, I don't know how we find out or let us know or
Yeah, who do you call there?
There's a, the city, no, there's a SED.
Could you just text it to me?
Okay, I'll keep reading, Lee.
Okay, yep, keep rolling.
Alright, so we're good on the committees or appointments, perfect, okay. authorize the business manager to receipt interest into the fund in which it accrues, except for the trust and custodial fund, to be reseeded to the general fund and invest monies in certificate of deposit and/or money market accounts. The next one is the membership renewals for twenty-six, ASBSD, Lake Central Conference, Northeast Athletics Conference, Northeast Special Services Co-op, middle-sized school lobby, South Dakota High School Athletics Association.
Activities Association.
Activities, gosh. Admission rates for activities, so currently for fiscal twenty-five, the students, when they come to games, a single game is three dollars, double header is three dollars, except when they pay their activities fee, which is ten dollars for the year, so that's only if they don't have that. Our students. Adults are single for five dollars, double header six dollars, and senior citizens, single three dollars, double header for three dollars. And then we have an addition, a change
Yeah, I had sent you guys out, we're, we haven't purchased them yet, but we're planning on it. We met with, is it Bound? It's basically the, the website through the Activity Association that has all of the, all of the data for, for teams and has his organization platform for athletic director. They provide card readers to schools, so they can, you can use plastic upon entry, you can preorder your tickets. It sounded like a great deal, like there's about, what do you say, almost thirty schools right now in the state that are, that are going to this. Very easy to use, straightforward, but obviously anytime that you run a card, there's going to be a fee. So it would be not real fiscally responsible to keep our, or keep our prices the same and then take, take on that fee, so what all, all school districts are doing is basically adding a dollar to their fees, so we would be bumping a dollar on every, every one of these. But keep in mind, as Danae just alluded to, our students get in for free, all of our students, well, for ten dollars for the year, which is minimal. Basically a credit card, debit card, anything, so we would run those at the entrance of basketball, football, any event that we would be having. We're still gonna take cash, nothing's gonna change, we're just, we're just providing the option.
So you have to take cash, we don't have to do card deals, is that a big deal?
It's becoming.
Yeah, it's like a way of the times now.
It's becoming a, becoming a big thing. Yeah, I think it was both, yeah.
Could I suggest, like us not, this seems maybe a stupid thing, but like not reducing or increasing the senior citizens one, cause likely they're not using cards, or maybe that's being, making it an assumption that's not fair.
Do you have a cash price and a card price?
No, everything's gonna be across the board, yeah.
Why don't we do both? Why don't we do a card price?
Yeah, everybody else is different.
Yeah, I mean, if I use a card on something, it's two percent or three percent sometimes, I'm stuck, oh yeah. Especially on a bigger
My only concern with doing two different prices is we already have a heck of a time finding people that are willing to sit at a gate and take tickets, and if we have two different prices that they have to continually go back and forth from.
I get that.
That would be my hesitation.
That would be my only hesitation too.
Yeah, and along with the, the card readers, even the cash is on a report that is printed, tells you the number of people that came in, it's gonna break down really nicely for Ellen.
So they have to key stuff in no matter
Correct, cash sale or card sale, it will register.
Or pass or whatever, yep, we can track our
I hate going up, but
Going to other games, it's
Same.
That's, that's just how much games are, I guess.
I, I was gonna say, I think we're on the low side of most places right now.
Are we giving that whole dollar away for every person that comes in though? We're not giving that all. If they use a card reader, it doesn't cost us a dollar.
No.
Percentage, percentage, but to be close to that.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent?
No, it was, I thought it was, I can't remember, I had it written down.
It was like so many cents, not a percent.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a flat, yeah.
I would say dollar would be the only way to increase it, you would wanna increase it with change, so it'd either be increasing by a dollar or not at all.
Alright, and then I think Mr. Schirnbeck added in his email as well that if we go this route and then our membership to Bound, the five hundred dollar yearly is given back by purchasing the card readers and getting a certain percentage of sales.
Is that yearly?
Yep.
They give it back yearly if you So what's, what's thoughts, guys?
So increasing to four, adults six, double headers or singles, a double header seven, and senior citizens four.
Could the activity be the same?
We, that's at the bottom here, but we talked about moving that up to seventy, isn't where we landed, Ellen?
You're talking about the, you're talking about the activity ticket?
The twenty punches for
No, I mean the student activity fee.
Yeah, we would, we would, we would leave that the same.
Students in grades four through twelve will pay a mandatory student activity fee of ten dollars, max of twenty dollars per family, which allows admissions to all school-sponsored home activities. Does not include postseason events sponsored by SDHSA. The students, dual students in grade K through three will not be charged admission to dual school-sponsored events if they are accompanied by a parent or guardian, so that ten dollars will remain the same. And then adults, twenty punches for sixty dollars will have to change
To seventy.
To seventy.
Change it to seventy, so we are gonna change all the other ones?
Are you guys good?
So students are gonna be four for a single and double header, adults will be six and seven.
It'll be eighty, cause you're doing, it'd be a dollar per punch.
Yeah, it's eighty dollars.
And
Yeah, but you get a discount by buying twenty at a time, so you gotta give them a little bit of a discount by in the twenty punches, is that what we've done in the past?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then senior citizens, we said, is it gonna be four? Four and four, okay.
So question on those card readers, can you get them, so they can use them at concessions then too?
Yeah, yeah, we can. We can, but I think we're gonna get to that point. We can, but we just decided we're just gonna, let's try these for this year.
The first year will not.
Yeah, but yeah, it's, it's feasible.
A lot of times you're sitting at games and some, you hear somebody or a kid comes up to their parents and wants cash and they're, well, I don't have any cash with me.
Yeah. Yeah.
But that might be their reason on purpose.
Maybe, yes, and, yeah, that's true, but.
If you haven't heard that, excuse me.
But all these kids know that you got your cards on your phone or whatever.
Yes, they do.
We're saving parents' money, why not?
But, correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, didn't they say there's like, isn't there like a five, you have to have a five dollar minimum, so students actually would not be able to use a. Card unless they're paying for more than one person, they wouldn't be able to use it coming in, because I think there's a minimum five dollars. For concessions, there's not, for concessions, there wasn't, but I was thinking for admission, there was.
So what do you mean, five dollars?
Using a card, a five dollar minimum?
Like a minimum, like a lot of places you go, you ha, you pay a minimum, you have to have a minimum charge to use them.
At concessions, I thought, oh, Ellen, you've never been with a kid and not spending five dollars at concessions, trust me.
No, I'm talking about admission, because I thought that, thought you had to, I thought there was a minimum amount that they would let you charge, but I might be wrong on that.
I don't remember that, I can look back at my notes.
That doesn't go for the entry fees?
I don't, I don't remember that.
I don't remember.
Go, we'll go, all right.
Well, how are we gonna leave this thing, are, are, are we gonna? Vote on all this stuff and then come back to this?
No, we're setting the rates right now, just set it right now.
We set it, so we added a dollar, we added a dollar everything, how about that? And then we'll go back, or we'll vote on all of it.
And seventy for the adult, okay, all right?
Okay, so now I'm gonna move on to rental rates. Which this doesn't hardly happen very often, but, uh, so currently, so you guys can tell me if we wanna change it. Uh, renting a bus with a driver is two dollars per mile, and without a driver, it's a dollar fifty a mile. Change, recommend to change it? No, okay. Banned instruments, fifty dollars, do we have a recommendation to change that?
No.
Banned percussion fee, twenty-five dollars, no change? Laptop fee, grades six through twelve, fifteen dollars a student, max thirty dollars per family. Keep the same? Uh, okay, good there on those rates, okay? Regular school board meetings, we'll have them the second Monday of the month at six P M. Do you wanna change that at all?
Seems to be working.
Yep, I agree, good. Mileage reimbursement, in-state, so this is for, uh, meals, the first line, actually all of them. Breakfast, six dollars, lunch, fourteen, and dinner, twenty, is this, did you compare it against what the state?
This is in-state, this is, yep, it is, I just printed it off, yeah, this was effective October first, twenty twenty-four, hasn't changed, that's what it is.
Okay, so we're just using the state?
We're using the state rates.
State rates. Do, okay, and then out-of-state breakfast, ten dollars, lunch, eighteen, dinner, twenty-eight. Student state event meals are ten dollars per meal, and then the mileage is the state rate as well, okay? School attorney, uh, right now Rodney Freeman hasn't retired yet, so he's still on the list, and then K S B law as well. Any change there? We'll keep them?
Yeah.
Substitute pay currently, uh, per day is a one thirty, do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I researched this, so the area schools, and we're probably about in the middle on this. I think if we put this up to one thirty-five, just to bump it a little bit, it might, it might put us over, uh, a few other schools, so depending on what they do tonight, too.
It's still gonna be hard to get something, so.
That's still hard, but it's, uh, yeah, and I would le, uh, my suggestion is to leave the long-term sub the same.
Uh, you guys good with one thirty-five for daily pay?
I think you should go up a little bit, you should, yeah.
Me too, yeah, I agree.
Yep.
And then we'll keep one seventy-five at long-term, the same, right, you wanted that?
Yes, yep.
Uh, meal rates, for now, we don't know if this is gonna change, so we'll just keep them for now, or did you have thoughts?
Nope, unless you guys wanna raise anything, and I can plug that in when I finish the application, but it might change, because like last year, we. Set rates, and then we had to change them based on.
Right.
The amount we put in the application, so.
So beverage, forty cents. Um, preschool through fifth, lunch, three sixty-five, sixth through eight, lunch, three sixty-five, nine through twelve, lunch, three seventy-five, adult lunch, five. Entree, one eighty-five, student breakfast, two dollar, adult breakfast, two fifty, and then, of course, there's subject to change on the re, release of the federal meal reimbursement rates. So I say we just keep it the same until we know otherwise, unless you guys have an opinion.
So, ki, can we adjust this next month if we do get that?
Yes.
Okay.
If they say, this is what you need to check, because that's what happened last year, is we had submitted the application, but there were a couple things, we, I think we ended up changing the beverage price.
We did adjust.
Adult lunch and the entrees, we had to adjust because they said you have to raise them, yes.
So, what is our consensus that we'd like to go up if we could, a little bit or not?
I would rather not.
So when you come back with.
If we, unless we have to.
Yeah, I'd rather not personally.
Because I think last year we tried to or something, didn't we?
We did, we went up a little bit, we went up a little bit last year, I think, yeah, we went up a little bit. I don't remember how much, I wanna say it was only like five cents or, five cents or ten cents or something, I think, yeah.
I mean, obviously, we don't wanna be in the hole, but at the same time.
Five cents, ten cents to pay that a hundred thousand dollars. Anyway.
I think, is consensus leave it? Leave them on the way.
Unless we have to, okay.
Okay.
Um, authorize the business manager to advertise for fuel quotes for fiscal twenty-six. We will adopt the following resolution. Whereas the monthly payment of bills does at times prevent the dual, dual school district nineteen dash four from taking discounts, and whereas it also discourages suppliers of fuel and other products. From quoting or bidding on school purchases because the cost of them of paying bills before payment would be received from the school. Therefore, let it hereby be resolved that the school board of dual school district nineteen four hereby approves and authorizes the business manager. Of the school to pay such bills early without prior board approval, when the business manager considers, considers it to be the best interest of the school district. This is dated the fourteenth of July, twenty twenty-five.
Hasn't changed, so.
No, it has not. Uh, we will also approve the non, should we stop there, or do we keep going?
You keep going.
Okay. Um, but the non-certified handbook is in this packet.
Yep.
That you have.
There were no significant changes in that, other than the date change.
So page fifty-three to the end. And you said no change, okay, so same as last year. Any questions on that one, or I can move on? Online, we will have the online school board policy manual, as we always have, through Symbli. Uh, we'll review the open meetings law, and we'll do that right now.
Yeah.
Ready?
You ready? I'm gonna read this verbatim. If you have your pamphlet, I'm just, I highlighted a few things, I'm just gonna touch on a few of the things that, that affect us, now granted, this is for. Political subdivisions, so this includes municipalities and, and, uh, not, not just schools, so.
And I'm gonna just say this is conducting the public's business in public.
Correct, so it includes cities, counties, school boards, and other public bodies created, uh, by ordinance or resolution, so. Uh, public bodies are required to provide at every official meeting a period of time on that agenda for public comment. So you will notice on every single agenda that we have, we have to offer that, that came to law, probably a couple years ago, that that, uh, that came to law, so. Um, with that, we have the power through policy to limit that time, which we do have. Can the public, uh, meetings be recorded? Yes, they can, obviously ours are recorded. Uh, when can a meeting be closed to the public, and that is, um, through executive session, and I'm just gonna go through these. Uh, these six topics, um, number one is to discuss personnel issues. Number two is to consideration of the performance or discipline of a student, or the student's participation in athletic activities, so that is solely for schools. Number three, consulting with legal counsel. Number four, employee contract and negotiations. Number five, to discuss marketing or pricing strategies. And then number six, to discuss information related to the protection of public or private property, such as emergency management response plans. Or other public safety information, and then obviously there's more to that as well. Um, proper procedure, eh, when you go into executive session is to explain the codified law. And the specific reason that you are going in, as they just mentioned, that this is good practice to do so. One note, this question in executive session must be strictly limited to the announced subject, no official votes may be taken during this time, so there is no voting. In executive session. The agenda itself, uh, no new items can be added after the agenda has been approved, so. Any of these, we always ask if there are additions, so you had to, you have to.
We could do it after the.
You have to do it, but.
You can't vote on it?
But it can't be after the agenda's been approved, has to be before that.
Adopt the agenda?
So, can you vote on something like that, though?
Could, you could add it, so if it's not on what we posted, we can add it, but we can't add it after the agenda's been.
Once it's approved, then you can add it.
Um, one of the things that, that we always hear a lot about, and that's, um, email correspondence. Uh, how that's a violation of the open meetings law, and they're very quick to talk about that at the joint convention, and we, of course, I mention it when we get new board members as well, so. Um, what email correspond, we don't really have correspondence, but it's been one way, so it's typically. It is all the time, me sending it to you, there is no replying to all or anything, you could reply back, but you can't reply to all, that would be considered a violation. Of open meetings, and that would apply to text messaging.
If you just reply, you're fine.
Yep.
Just to Chad.
Just to me, yep.
That's why I like send everything blank or ask, because you can't, you only, you reply, you can only reply.
Yep, to the sender. Um. Just a little overview here, uh, the proposed agenda, uh, excuse me, proposed agenda needs to be visible, readable, and accessible for at least twenty-four hours in advance. And it also should be posted on your website, if you have a website, so. We always make sure that ours is right out front here in the admin, plus it's posted online prior. Um, so you can, you can see that. Um, we occasionally do a teleconference meeting, I know we've done that during negotiations. Um, in order to do that, you need to take, uh, role with a roll call vote. And. Everything else can be done with a voice vote after that, so it's just the roll call for attendance, and then it can be done similar to a meeting as well. And then it also says, if you were to do that, you are to provide that link to the public, so even when we have. A special meeting or something that's on Zoom, we have to provide that link to the public, so they can, they can jump on if they want to, so. Um, those are probably the, the biggest things that I thought that, that you guys deal with, we all deal with. Um, if there is a, a referral to the online, uh, commissions, or there is a violation, you're supposed to report it to your local law enforcement. And then they investigate the, they investigate the claim, so you occasionally hear of, of somebody. Breaking an open meetings law, but it's, I, I don't know what they've actually come down the pipe with in terms of. Double secret probation, or I don't know what the penalties are. Yeah, so, there's a short overview of it, which we will have to do annually moving forward.
Yeah, we actually need to go back and approve all of the rates as one thing, and then just one of these next one.
That's what I was wondering, no, it's okay. So before the authorized business manager, or what?
Yes, it's all the rates that we did.
All from the first page through before authorized business manager to advertise for fuel quotes, good for there, that's where we're gonna vote on now?
I'll make a motion to do so, second, Wade.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and so then now the rest of these are individually?
Yes.
That's what I thought, okay, so then authorize the business manager for the fuel quotes with that resolution, or we have to?
Nope, that each one's separate, each one of these is separate, sorry.
Joel moves to do so, on manager, advertise for fuel quotes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, adopt the resolution that I already read.
Motion.
Second, Joel.
Got it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, motion to approve the non-certified handbook.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and, uh, we just read, oh, no, the online school board policy being on Symbli, motion for that.
Second, Joel.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and review the open meeting laws, which we just did.
I don't, do we have a motion to that? I think we should have, we should have to put it in the minute, just saying that we, that was completed.
Got it.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Back to regular list, that's okay. Authorize the business manager to publish the following list of employees' salaries, and go to the next page, and that's the full list. Okay, motion for that.
Motion.
Tony?
Second.
Wade, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We're at the other business already, any other business?
That's it, isn't it? Make a motion adjourned?
Did we say, are we, are we doing an, uh, academic update at the August?
August, yep.
That's what I thought.
Yep, excuse me, so, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was doing. Okay, so, uh, well, but let's quick, before we adjourn, sorry, sorry, Joel.
Okay, that's fine.
I know, I wasn't ready. Uh, the August meeting, we have, um, I wrote down academic retreat, so I just wanna make sure Todd and Katie, you guys are ready for that, will that be okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, of course, then I wrote down to approve the budget, um, as well, Ellen, if we'll be ready for that. Um.
Have we, did we approve the budget last year in August?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I think it went to September.
September.
I was gonna say it goes September.
We went a little delayed.
If we have it ready to go, we can, like, I mean, I can.
It was ready.
Okay.
Why delay, or do you wanna delay?
Something about getting something from the county, or again, was there?
We have until August thirtieth, or September first.
Yeah, until September.
September thirtieth?
Yeah, I think so.
I wrote it down. Final budget and levies due by September thirtieth. So really, we could do it in August, or we could wait till September.
Would they call this the second reading of the budget, or would they call this?
This is just, you have to do a budget hearing, because it has to be published in the paper, so the original first budget that we came up with had to be published in the paper, and this is a hearing. So if somebody could, for the hearing, somebody could have came in and, if they wanna say, I don't agree with this, whatever, or.
Ask questions.
Ask questions on it, or whatever, yes, you have to publish it.
I mean, we could do it in August, or we can do it in September, I guess, does it, the levies, we probably won't have in August by then, do you think, or will we?
Well, we have everything, I think.
I think there was one levy we didn't have.
There is, um, I'm trying to think of which one it is, uh, there's one that we.
We didn't have.
And I don't think we, I don't know if we even had it when we actually voted on it last year.
I think so, there, if you think it's, if we can vote on it in August, it doesn't matter.
Yep, I'll try to get everything together, because I've made some changes on, um, like after we, like people that, because there were people that. Had insurance or whatever, and don't, or and some that took insurance, that didn't, yeah, so there's, I mean, there's some adjustment stuff, but I'll try to get all that put together.
We didn't finalize those levies, like what we're doing in the levies, so.
But that's what we have to do at that meeting, too.
Right, that's what I'm saying, are we gonna be ready for the levies in August? To, to decide, are we gonna max out?
And everything like that, don't we, the amount of evaluation?
Except the one, but.
Oh, okay.
I think let's do it all in, in August, unless there's some reason you don't think we're ready for it.
Yeah, we're max, we're max.
We're in a maximum.
We're max levy at everything, so it, right.
I think that was the deal.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, anyways.
Making a difference.
Like, say you had a big change in, in one, you know, we have a counselor off, do you go back in and readjust?
Yeah, I'll make, yeah, I'll make some changes, like I said, I, I've been making some changes, like I said, with other stuff, too, and things, yeah. Yeah, it's still fluid right now, and, yep, so I'll take.
Budget gets okayed in August or September, you can't do that again.
Well, if you make any change, you can make changes, but then we just have to do an amendment to the budget, we would have to do an amendment to the budget if we, for some reason, we needed to change something.
Probably is, doesn't have a lot of meaning to do so, anyway.
Well, no, but you, you have to, like, if we would have been over budget on anything now, then we would have had to, actually, this meeting, we would have had to do an amendment to the budget. If we would have been over, we didn't have any, we weren't over.
I told Ellen to, to her horn about.
I was just gonna say, we didn't have any this year. That's amazing.
And you have to, and you can do it by fund, because last year I did it by operational unit, which we had a whole pile of them, we would have had to do some anyway. But when I went to training, they said, no, you only have to do it by fund, so, I mean, all of our funds, our general fund, our capital, everything was. Below what we had planned for expenses, so we didn't have to do any amendments to our budget.
Good news.
Get your horn, yeah.
Um, the annual report, will that be in August or September, do you think?
Um, probably Sept, well, it depends when I get it done, and when it's approved, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks, I just wanted to figure out what we're doing in August, um, ahead of time. I think that's it, any other business?